I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So there's a lot going around and we're gonna get our fourth person, so we're going to kind of jump around a bit. Obviously Jamie's one of the people that's out with Phil tonight, um, so bear with us, we're gonna start with.
We're gonna start with new staff and tenure celebrations, so I'll turn it to Mr. Burns and Dr. Weller in a second, and then we are gonna highlight the Board of Education celebrations this week, uh, the week of October thirteenth is Board of Education Week. Uh, and then from there, we will take our next step, uh, being that we only have three board members, we have to approach this a little bit differently. So I'll turn it to Mr. Burns and Dr. Weller to celebrate new staff and tenure folks.
I can go first. Uh, we have our new staff that will also be presenting tonight, Mr. Richard Card as our new Director of Food Service has joined us. And Secretary over at the bus garage, Carmen Johnson Lawrence. And Emma, did Emma come out? Oh, there she is. I knew I was. And Emma Shannon, who is our Registrar and our Secretary to the Collective Care Team.
Nice.
Alright, uh, new teaching staff who are here tonight, um, we've got Shelby Errepple in the front row. She's our middle school literacy teacher this year. A couple seats away from her there, Valerie Femia, Middle School ELA. Uh, we have Don Ferris on the head, High School Science, Chemistry, and Jevon and Bio. Um, Matt Marion in the background, Exeteri, uh, Middle School Math, eighth grade. We do have a few others who aren't here for me to introduce, um, uh, let's go, you know, a future board meeting. But we've also got tenure recognition tonight, Barb Vardy, who's a Speech and Language Pathologist, uh, receiving tenure tonight. So thank you to all of our staff who joined us tonight, um, and we appreciate, um, we, this has been our new uh, opportunity every October to celebrate new staff that when they come in, um, and we are intentional that we use the October meeting. Uh, and then we also had the privilege of having Barb's tenure with that as well. Um, and then this week also, as I said, highlights, um, our Board Appreciation Week. So, um, this is Board Appreciation Week. Uh, I have a little video that we put together to share with the board, um, for the gratitude for the work that you do. As many folks know, this is a volunteer position where they spend a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of energy coming in to support our school, our district, our students, and our staff. Um, so after the video, we're gonna take a quick intermission break for the folks that are here, the board members like to come introduce themselves. Um, we have water, we have cookies, um, and then we'll jump back into the meeting and hopefully at that point we have a fourth board member and we can jump into our actual voting and those pieces. We always tell folks that have come to the meeting, we appreciate and love if you wanna stay, but you do not need to or have to stay. Many of you have been here all day working and you have a lot going on tonight. Um, so after we show the presentate, or the, the quick video, we'll take a break. We can ninkle for a little bit and then folks that wanna peel out, please feel free to leave and know that you don't have to stay for the full meeting. Uh, Nate, can you touch to the video, please?
We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you to the board and that I appreciate the great welcome I had here for my first year at Red Jacket. It's been great so far and I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you again.
We just wanna say thank you to the board for everything you do for the school and the community.
Thank you for everything you do for our kids and students. Thanks for everything you do, all the support you give, not only teachers, staff, but for students, making sure that we all have the tools, supplies, and materials we need to help the students and everybody be successful.
And thank you to our Board of Education for all their support and our contribution to our work.
Thank you for all the time.
We appreciate you.
So now that we have four, we're gonna have a call to the meeting in order. We already did the pledge, so, um, first up is our minutes from our September eleventh meeting. Um, did anybody have any a positive recommendation of superintendent of schools, a person of education law? We have, the Board of Education approves September eleventh, twenty twenty five, regular Board of Education meeting, we're all presented. All in favor? Uh, sorry, it's got me looking confused and I didn't understand.
What?
She said you looked confused.
No, no.
I thought we didn't understand. Okay.
Just give me.
More rusty. What?
Just give me your motion.
Okay, perfect. Okay, moving on. We'll keep it going. Okay, so now we're up to our September twenty fifth work session. Does anybody have any favor minutes from that? We're good. Okay. So that's, excuse me, a positive recommendation of superintendent of schools, a person to education law. Board of Education approves September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, regular Board of Education meeting as presented for motion. Amy first, go second. All in favor? I almost carried. I see what you said, huh? Next up we have personnel. Which we typically approve via consent agendas, everyone, if they have. Um, a positive recommendation of superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented for motion. Got me. All in favor? I opposed, carry. Okay, we did our tenure, our board celebration. Is there any public comment?
Nope.
Nope, okay, thank you. Alright, so now we're up to our senior presentation.
Um, I know we went up there last time. Do you want us to go up there or stay here? What do you want us to do?
You're going.
Go up there.
Brisa, what do you want to do?
So, we're gonna start by kicking things off with all the spirit going on with our school right now. So right now we are in Spirit Week. Today was color war, seniors were pink. Um, and all the grades were assigned to color that were, that were supposed to wear, show their spirit. Earlier this week, we had Wild West versus West Coast, and then we had Costume Day. So people wore their Halloween costumes, dressed up as cowboys, showed their spirit, and then tomorrow was Spirit Day. So it'll be red, black, white, we'll have the pepperoni at the gym, do all our games, seniors will get the spirit stick, run through the hallways, rip down all the decorations, cause right now, all the classes are decorating the hallways out there. So seniors are gonna rip that down tomorrow. That's where I'm heading after this. Now another, all of us, we got a whole bunch of senior things going on. So Senior Sunrise was last Wednesday. We had pizza, we had fruit, we had cereal, we had cornhole out there, so we're just having a good time. It was a really, um, nice sunrise that day too. Um, another big thing with the seniors is we're having all our senior nights, pretty sure last night was both the soccer game and the golf senior nights. Um, this weekend's a football game, and then next weekend cross-country has their senior night. And one more thing for the seniors, a lot going on, uh, their banners are up in the hallway, so if you wanna see them, all their pictures from their sports are up in the hallway. I think we have twenty-seven this year?
Wow.
It's a lot. It's like the most I've ever seen in my time here. And one more thing, NHS at the pumpkin walk, they were painting faces for all the kids there, and that was another good time, so.
Beautiful. Okay, my highlight of the month, uh, is the musical, which I'm a part of. Uh, so this year is, um, Goodman Charlie Brown, sorry to name that, I just go by Charlie Brown. Um, it's November twenty-first to twenty-third, um, so it's actually really nice because usually we either build props or, um, kinda like do it all ourselves, but this year we actually, uh, went to another production and they were able to lend them to us, so that would be nice. And then we just had, um, the crew decorate, um, paint it over and kinda make it our own. Um, so far it's going like highly organized. I think this is a best year, everyone's working hard. Um, I think, I'm pretty sure everyone has been like putting their good effort, really hard work into it, and it's going off pretty good, really good this year. Um, obviously everything's memorization worthy, so, but I think once we get into the full run, that'd be amazing. Um, yeah, so if you were wondering who the main are, which there's just six main this year, and then we have, um, other high schoolers and then middle schoolers who are kind of filling up the stage and putting their part in as well. But the main characters of musical is Dixon Hobart, Katie Mitchell, Ava Mitchell, um, Josh.
Lapel.
Lapel. And then Ashley Henson and then, yep.
Alright, so, good move on?
Yep.
Okay, so we had a student development thing for Board of Education. It was late September. We joined onto this Zoom call type of thing on a platform called Schoolology. And the goal was to kinda develop our ability as leaders, talk about what student board members are supposed to do. And that really didn't go that well, meeting was canceled after like ten minutes and technological difficulties, right? So, but we learned a few things, we talked with some other people for a few minutes, but we got another meeting coming up. Um, some of the issues are being rectified, so we're gonna be able to get into that moving forward.
Yeah, um, so hopefully it works better, it's on the same platform, so hopefully things will look better. They posted like a slide tutorial, I think, something to kinda show how to get onto the Zoom call because it's a little confusing, but I, we got there, so, but yeah, it was, I think in general it's gonna be a very great opportunity for everyone who are student board members, so.
Student feedback? So one of the things we've kinda picked up from this whole leadership training type of thing is we wanna get as much feedback from the students as we can. So we've been thinking about ways we're gonna do that, um, I've been looking through the social media lens and she's been looking through the suggestion boxes in classrooms. So I'm trying to get into contact with the leader of the current Barstool owner of an Instagram account. I don't know who that is, but I'm trying to figure that out, that way I can get in contact with them, get some surveys through there, and then if I can't do that, then I'll make my own Instagram account, put it under RJ's name, get consent, use the logo and everything, push some surveys out, get some student feedback on that. And then, we can also get, um, student feedback through the carbon across, putting surveys into it, putting ideas into it, floating some things out there, seeing what people think. You wanna talk about the suggestion boxes?
Um, yeah, so we haven't gotten fully to the suggestion boxes, we're trying to figure out a time, cause we're both super busy, um, throughout the school day and after, so we're trying to figure out a way to kinda notify people, um, notifying the students of the use of it again and kind of getting back into it, so we're trying to figure out a plan to do that, um. We're still in the works, but hopefully we're gonna get there soon and start bringing those into, um, the classrooms to get more student feedback on their behalf and what they believe, so, yeah.
So, along with the phone bin this year, we had a backpack bin. You're not allowed to carry backpacks to and from your classes, and we, you, you have been able to for like the past five years, but prior to that, before COVID, you couldn't have your backpacks. We were ki- we kind of relaxed on it during COVID, a lot of people bring their backpacks around, but we're, as a district, we're cracking down on it. Um, and that, that's made the students a little bit upset. There wasn't a whole lot of pushback against the phones or anything, but the backpacks have been, have made the students upset, it was position coming around everything, so. In order to address that, um, Mr. George went to a student council meeting earlier this month, and Mr. Bernard is going to an NHS meeting later this month. At the Tuesday, um, on the twenty-eighth, the town hall that we're holding, we're kinda, we're gonna ask for feedback on that, see what some possible solutions to it are. And then from that, we're gonna try and segue it into a student survey that we send out and see what they think about all these possible solutions, see what they think. And, yeah.
Okay, beautiful. So at our, for our training, the, um, Board of Education student, um, training, uh, there was two that we went in person, and then our second one, um, mainly by, that I've kind of talked about, are, um, what we were aiming to do this year, kind of what our main values are, and one of those were peer-to-peer, kind of, um, working around that basis. So I had a meeting with Ms. Fuchs, and we kinda discussed something that she has been kinda going over with other people in the elementary and, uh, people over at the YMCA in Rochester, um, trying to form a, um, a tutoring kind of program, there's an after-school program for tutoring to get kids over there, and we're thinking about more younger kids, um, grades three, um, third grade to fifth grade, um, trying to get them over there and having it kind of as like a, um, I put it out like a daycare kind of thing, but this is more, so I just wanna state before I get into deeper, this is more like brainstorming kind of section, nothing is stated in depth, this is like getting everybody together and kind of, um, bringing ideas in, um. So, for the daycare kind of layout, we're thinking about getting them to do like, um, rotations in a sense. So it would get them to do stuff like arts, PE, even, um, and then we'd have a kind of a snap time and then get them all together for kinda like the tutoring kind of thing, um, so it's not just aiming towards, um, educational improvement and stability, it's also aiming to force social skills and, um, um, and like their se- their sense of belonging, um. Yeah, um, sorry. Um, so, try to get a lot. Okay, so, whoo, okay. When our kind of the aims of doing this, like I said, were to get not just educational, um, so what we were looking at in the meeting was, um, this week showed me kind of like, um, surveys from like the local assessments and surveys, um, data results. And it was kind of, we were looking at kinda like the mental health, um, statistics, graduation statistics, and like the housing statuses and whatnot in Ontario County, and we were, um, thinking of like kind of by doing this, it will be like implementing certain aspects to kind of give those kids a course of hopefully a more stable and easier path throughout their s- um, s- like their education in school throughout the other grades, so hopefully in the future we can see kind of those rates drop in Ontario County. So, um, yeah, and we were like, why we wanted to do it with younger kids, because starting young, they're not learning fully everything yet, like if we did middle schoolers, middle schoolers already have learned what, from the elementary experience and whatnot of kind of like, it would be just kind of harder to change habits than teaching them habits, um. And then, so, um, so we also discussed kind of like some issues or worries or boundaries with this that we have to look into. Um, and that's like cost worry, worry transportation, because it's an after-school and it's in Rochester. Um, and then supervision and like possibly using, um, district staff, um, but also plus is that the YMCA, which we're probably hosting this, um, would be maybe able to hire or provide staff that would kind of overlook this and, um, benefit, it'd be kind of like a little bit of a wiggle room, and then, um, coordination, and then making sustaining it. So trying to make sure this is a continuation, it's not a one-time thing, um, so, um. And I'll go, okay, so there's actually a one that was already kind of, um, was kind of in the pro- um, I think it was processed or it was like already in use, it was called HYPE. And so basically meaning from that is that there's already pro- um, policies of how that worked, what were the benefits, what worked, what didn't work. And so we can look at those and bounce off of that, so we're kind of getting a cluster that. Um, and planning wise, because this is the base level more of like the brainstorming and whatnot, um, we're thinking of trying to get everyone together to discuss brainstorm, get all the ideas flowing of how we can go from this standpoint, um. And then get feedback from the community, parents, students, um, all that sorts on what they think will be beneficial, what they value, what they would want or need, and then just getting all the input. And then looking at those groups like the HYPE and getting, um, kind of the policies and seeing how we could lay it out for the, lay it out in habit structure to the best ability as we can. And it's a lot of work, but we're trying to hope to see it maybe by the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year. So, yes, sorry, a lot, a lot of stuff.
Anything you wanna add?
No.
Okay.
You did a really good job.
Want to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you need to do a hall decorating?
Yeah, I'm getting a, I'm doing a hall decorating, thank you guys.
I'll only bring back the one thing, but the musical, the senior citizen night is the night of our board meeting, so our board meeting will be in the library again. I don't want the board meeting, it'll be in the library.
Okay, next up is the operation, operating, transportation, observatory, facilities.
So before I jump in, I joked, but I feel like I sent Chris in the interim, like two presentations for me gets only clears the room, but, uh, I did tell him all the brain cushions, cause two presentations for me can sometimes take a long time. But I'm gonna go quick. First thing, uh, what I want you to pay attention to tonight is that Richard and Tom and I all created, uh, our slideshow based on the Strategic Action Plan and the steps, uh, that Chris has been working, not only with the buildings on, but also each of these departments, and for those of you on the board, which is all of you that have been here for quite a while, I think this is probably the first time Facilities, Food Service, and Transportation have done a presentation that would be aligned to a strategic plan, so a little bit of kudos to Chris for that. I will say for us, I think it's a little bit of a learning curve, uh, cause it is the first time. It's not like my building council plan that I can go back into, that I've looked at, I've done, I have experience with, so this is even sort of new for me this year. And how we're going to try to align ourselves, and I, I don't honestly think it's that hard to align ourselves, but thinking about what we're gonna do with our groups to try to keep that alignment across the board, so. You're gonna see a very common theme in our slides, and I'll point that out. You'll see up at the top, all of our goals, we have some initiatives that we're looking to try to put in place. Again, many times the initiatives that you're gonna be looking at, and I'm not gonna read the slides, are things that haven't necessarily been going on, or maybe they did take place, but they were taking place with the same level of consistency that we're hoping to provide to each of the departments. And then some indicators for accountability. You'll see on my slides, I had to give myself a quick little sort of focus point. And my focus for culture, I guess, culture is the base of everything. Culture for me as a building principal is something that has taken a long time to develop, it's not something that happens overnight. It's not something that you're gonna send a survey and create, it's not going to happen in one probably calendar year, to be honest with you. Because culture requires those two things, increased visibility for me and communication, cause those two things build trust within people. So, when I say increased visibility, when Chris asked me to take on facilities, one of the first things I said to Chris was I have to be physically present, I was just in the boiler room, uh, being able to work with the guys. So like tomorrow, tomorrow's a Carhartt day for me, so it's boots and Carhartts tomorrow, it's a t-shirt, red jacket, t-shirt. Tomorrow's the facilities day, to make sure that we're ready to go for homecoming this weekend. But it really is about building trust within the people that you're working with, that you're doing the same work. Like, yes, I was building principal, but I built trust with Elaine Anderson and Rebecca Ikewoods and then Nicole Loftons of the world by sitting in meetings with them, listening to what they have to say, taking their suggestions and applying. That isn't any different in any one of our three roles, it's about being visible, being part of the team, doing the work with them, communicating and building trust. So, that is really my focus, uh, with this part, is to try to continue to build a culture, because if you have a good culture, I feel like it ties into our next, for all of us, if I can get it to go. Very good. Engagement. You get engagement if you have a good culture. For me, engagement really speaks to that third star, which is develop a sense of shared purpose by connecting facilities work to our district's education mission. Sounds fancy, but when you have engagement and you have people that have a shared purpose, they have motivation to do well. And that is not just the people that are out here tonight cleaning, for me, or the people in the boiler room looking at art. We're not gonna have heating issue, I promise you tomorrow, but, uh, any potential heating issues, um, it's really about also getting our staff, our teachers, the people in their departments, to have that shared purpose too. Uh, and to appreciate one another. The three people that are presenting tonight, all are working in service industries, unfortunately, when working in a service industry, typically the only thing you hear from people is when there's a problem. Uh, you write very, I always say, you write very few reviews for a really good meal at the depot. You don't go home, like that was above average, that was well above average, you don't go on the internet, unfortunately, to write a review. You write a review or send one of the three of us an email when a negative experience. But that's also about getting people to see the positive, because lots of times, unfortunately, you walk through buildings, you walk grounds, and when there's nothing negative to look at, you sometimes can't pick out the positive that's going on within the building. I have a very, like, you guys all know, my wife works at Kansas Medical, so I end up walking those all the ways, my kids go to Bloomfield. I pull into that parking lot looking a lot different when I'm dropping Viv off every morning, I'm checking their island, like how well is it mowed, how well is it trimmed? I walk open house hallways looking at corners to see like, did they, did they hit the main hallway or are they getting everything? Uh, but we also have to get everyone, I think, when you're talking about that group of people, it's, it's a very thankless job to understand that you can never tell those groups of people, the groups of people that we're presenting on, that they're doing a great job enough. Because it does go on, there's a Zoom call eleven-thirty tonight, cleaning, and the only thing they're gonna hear tomorrow morning is if they don't think somebody's floor got cleaned as well as it should have. Uh, so getting them to take ownership of the fact that like, also, I, I said with Chris for my weekly this week and went through some of this with him, and the idea that a lot of our kids come from homes that aren't clean homes, and making sure that like when they walk in our rooms is an example of a clean, healthy sanitary space for them. Uh, when they get on our buses, that they work properly, they're running properly, when they're walking and playing on the playground, that the equipment is safe and it's put together well, and again, you don't hear about it for four hundred, hopefully a thousand days. You only hear about it when something breaks and then unfortunately, I would hope somebody doesn't get hurt. So, uh, when you have good culture, you can build good engagement, and when you have good engagement, you achieve good things. So, for achievement, the thing I'm really focusing on is getting a more of a preventative maintenance schedule in place, just being totally transparent, it wasn't the strong seat of the department previous, having a strong preventative maintenance. having a strong preventative maintenance uh system in place. So there are things that we need to do that can extend the life of a lot of our things and in turn save us a lot of money if we don't have to replace things. I will also say like, this is a lofty goal, being in this position is not uh, it's not bad, but it's also not a hundred percent ideal to it. Like, I, don't get me wrong, I enjoy it immensely, like, I really, really do. Uh I like the challenge at this point in my career, but it is a challenge. Uh and getting through these three things and trying to build these three things is going to be challenging. It's something I want, but it's, if I come back to you in a year, you know, I have certain budgetary goals, my own personal goals with Chris and with Tim, uh there's things I want to accomplish, but they are gonna be a challenge, I'm just gonna be very honest with you, uh to accomplish all of those things. Um but I'm excited for the opportunity, excited to take it on, uh so that's.
Jeff, is there things that the board can do or administration to support that for you?
Uh patience right now, I guess. I'm still trying to pick, like, if you look, I'll go back to the last one, like, when I, I was looking through them, you know, a big thing is that balance of, just being honest in that, I, I think, you know, Tim would be the first to study, being honest, having that balance of doing the right thing for the district in the sense of cost and man hours is, I'm still figuring that out. Like, we've looked at, you know, for maintenance alone, you know, from four regular full-time guys to, first we were about two, you count Bill Brown, Moens, two and a quarter, where I can throw in a day or two. Right now, when I tell you we needed to be at four, maybe not. Are we where we totally should be? You know, if one or two of my guys, one guy gets hurt, yeah, we're gonna be struggling. So, but it's finding that balance for me. It's like, where do we need to be staffing wise, especially in a district this size? Like, what can we do, what are the resources? You know, another thing is, you know, communication, engagement, culture. I've tried to do a lot with reaching out to the village and working with George, Pajkus and the other village, with Kyle, with Amelia at town, uh they've been extremely helpful. Um and trying to use some of our partners within our community to also take on some things, um and making those partnerships have been helpful. Uh right now, is there something that you can do? No, I think just giving us patience while we sort of figure out what the lay of the land is and what it needs to, and I'll be honest with you, when I figure it out, unfortunately I don't have to right now. All right, you gotta hear from me again in a minute. Just touch me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Evening, how's everybody doing? Um so continuing on with Jeff did, we're starting off, working on our culture in the bus garage. We wanna grow and make it respectful of one another, as well as carrying on the same messaging that the district has, um with new Cardinals here. So in doing that, we technically done put some things on the buses, so drivers are having conversations with the students. It's gonna be kind of the same messaging they're getting from their principals or their deans of students, um with their behaviors. We've also, within the bus garage, trying to improve maybe some of how we interact with one another, we're having the Bosse's personnel that are um within the district, I don't know, it's all the Bosse people, and Hillary and Erica. And instead of the drivers just listening and the monitors listening to my voice, bring somebody outside in, let them talk to them regarding um some, doing some self-reflection and holding themselves accountable for how we're, they're interacting with one another, how we're all interacting with one another. Um we're gonna continue to our monthly department meetings and trying to close a loop on a few um areas that pop up once in a while with what's the rule, what has to be done, what does have to be done. Create an employee handbook that spells out some of those things that aren't in the contract that we follow. And hopefully that'll uh take care of quite a bit of those minor issues that we've had. For indicators of success, we're gonna be conducting a mid-year, I'm gonna go to about the end of January, a survey within the department to find out how everybody's feeling. Um and make any changes or uh shifts from there to continue making progress. Well, I'm hitting it, Jeff, but yeah.
You can try the box.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Make sure you're in the activity, okay. Um so try to make sure that all the drivers of the department, as small as it is, that the people have a voice in how things are done, or how things are run, or make sure that they are heard. We created an advisory committee made up of three, two drivers and one monitor, three of the staff. Um and they're the people I'm gonna lean on for creating this handbook I told you about, where they can interact with the drivers. Um it's already been interesting, it goes along, like Chris said, we should do it this way, give them, I walk in the break room and I'm just being pounded with, so we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that, and I'm like, well, you need the other two people that are driving for it to do it. You know, we're gonna have conversations about this before we adopt it. Um and what I took away from that was, man, I do not wanna be the only person doing this. 'Cause that'd be, oh, we didn't want that, but that's what Tom would do. So hopefully the additional involvement, having everybody engaged is gonna help us out with that. Um we already had our first meeting, and we're hoping to have the handbook completed and drafted and hopefully reviewed by the attorney by early twenty twenty six. That'd be our goal there. And then have them present it to the entire bus garage. Looking at achievement, um yes, building on what Jeff said a little bit about, you know, you never hear anything if you do something wrong. Um trying to give the drivers a, and, let's look back up a second. Red Jacket is an amazing district with these students coming from uh the city of Rochester, where I was at before, the first student. The behavioral issues are miniscule, um and the scale of them, the, uh the severity of them is not even worthy of mention, uh compared to some of the stuff that we were dealing with up there. Uh and that just speaks to the, I'd say, the culture of the district and the community as a whole, parents raising their children and allowing the district to hold them accountable for their actions if necessary. Um but we were focused on the fact that the bigger picture of is what are the drivers doing by um getting of their time, not just what their um, the runs, the routes every morning and every afternoon, but the people that step up with a discretionary effort and they take a sports trip, they do a field trip. And what they're doing is they're creating opportunity uh and access for students that may otherwise not have. Some people may have never been to the Seneca Park Zoo. Lo and behold, it's a field trip, we go to the Seneca Park Zoo. Last year, transported a Spanish club to the zoo, and then they went to a restaurant, Spanish, uh a Mexican restaurant. Um they didn't like my suggestion of Olive Garden, but that's all right. Um but looking at it from that type of perspective, the drivers, if it wasn't for the drivers that are taking those runs and doing that, these kids may not be able to um go to the F L C C to take their PSATs, which it was, it was, it was touch and go this morning about how we were gonna make that happen. Um just a little background, I have a driver whose daughter's about to give birth any minute now, and that's a big concern, 'cause I'm like, she's late to the weekend, right? You know, we got stuff to do. You can drive in the morning, not the afternoon, is that what you're gonna be doing? She's like, I don't know, stop asking. Um but I wanna create a running tabulation of the extra trips the garage is doing to demonstrate to the drivers the extra stuff they're doing, not just their, their regular runs, and what that is allowing us students in the district, um the opportunities to have. Um there's an internship, I think that uh one of the teachers is trying to set up for a few students over, I'm not sure, P Tech or it was up in Newark at one of the buildings at Bosse's. And transportation was a concern for them, if we don't do it, how are they gonna get there? How are we gonna have that opportunity? And I think having the drivers see their role from that kind of a perspective will be a little bit more impactful than just getting up, coming in five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, get on a bus and take the snotty, runny nose kids in the winter time, only doing so cold out and sick to and from school. And that's where we got. Any questions I can answer?
Probably questionable, you have your tally done at the end of the year of all those extra runs that you all did. I'm sure we all love to.
Care how good it was, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Thank you. There you go.
Good evening, everybody. So um being new, being new to the district, um I um I've come, actually, well, let me start, I'm a, I'm a long mat class and I need career card jacket. Um and I consider myself very fortunate to be back here in this position. Um and I sit in Mr. Peters's class, where I used to sit in a desk. Um and it, my desk is there, so I sit there every day and I'm here, and it's just, it's still, I'm still not over it, but anyway. Um so I am, I'm twen- twenty-five years of my career have been in long-term care, so now I'm here at the other end of the spectrum and loving every, every minute of it. Um what button are we hitting here?
The one at the arrow, to the right, to the left, yeah, to the right. See it? The little ones with page number in the bottom?
No. Sure. Oh, I see it, oh, I'm looking at the keyboard.
Yep.
So um being new to the, being new to the district, um one of the things, you know, that, that I come in, um and when I look at culture is, you know, I, first thing I need to do is build trust with my staff. Um you know, and to do that, I need to be visible, I need to, to get them to realize that I'm here for them, that, and you know, that I got their back, basically. Um so one of the things that we're looking to do is to um establish that culture in the cafeteria that promotes respect, dignity and pride, but not only with the staff, also with students. Um so and to do that, also wanna be visible in the cafeteria and um, you know, making those matches and those touches that we call influence service. Um some of the initiatives we're looking at to do that is um with the staff meeting individually. Um and sometimes with some, with some staff members that might feel a little nerve-wracking, maybe try to set up like a, like a um, a one-on-one. Uh and I don't wanna put anybody in a position, I'm pretty, I'm, I'm fairly easygoing, so, so I, I would consider a one-on-one, you know, a, a conversation in the um where it's just me and the other person in the, in the prep area. You know, I, I look at those as one-on-ones, and I treat those um like that, and they're just conversations, that's all they are. Um and we're, we're uh, we have the same thing with staff meetings, monthly staff meetings. It's, it's just gathering the whole team around, you know, around a prep table. It's not, are we sitting in seats and, and we standing up in front of everybody talking? It's a conversation that we're all having. Um they give feedback, you know, I, I, it's a good chance for me to convey some information, some important information to them. Um I give them feedback, they give me feedback. Um and making sure it's, it's an open, you know, uh, uh, you know, that, that the, that the, it's an open environment where they, they're free, they're free to talk, um and to voice their, their opinions. And then to gather that feedback, um so that we can identify where people are having challenges or where our teams have a challenge and what opportunities that we have. Um some of the indicators, um that would be, you know, showing that, that this is being successful, or that this is successful would be increased team morale, um increased communication, uh you can always increase communication. Um and um just operational efficiency. Engagement, promoting engagement and collaboration. Um so this is, this is, this one's more pointed towards students, but this could go staff, um towards the staff as well, but um more so with the students. Um getting their feedback is very important. Um they're, in, in my mind, they're, they're our customers. They're, they're, you know, we want them to, we want them to utilize our programs, our practice program, our lunch program. Very important, I mean, it's very important for, you know, for their learning, um for them that, you know, they come into our, to our cafeteria, we're the first, some of the first people that they see in the day, at the beginning of their day. Um you know, and I, I, it, it's very important and lu- you know, lunchtime, it's really, it's fueling the day, um that's what we're doing. And this is what I talk to my staff about too, is making sure they know that, that we do have an important piece of the education process by, by feeding that, um and, and providing that, that nourishment. Um one, one of the things that we're doing is we're gonna, with the help of the communication um de- department, we're gonna be uh pushing out uh student surveys. We shoot for at least two this first year, um and about the dining service, or the food service program, getting their feedback. Um and hopefully with, with technology, we can have some really cool ways to uh, to look at that data and, and really um break it down and do something with it. Um another thing we're doing is inviting vendors to tell them the products in the cafeteria. Uh we have done, um scheduled the last week of this month, we're having a vendor come in to sample for the students so they can try stuff. Um it's um Asian cuisine, so it's something that I haven't, that, looking back at past menus, I didn't see much of it. So something new, um for them to try, and then getting that feedback from them, um not only from the surveys, but from that, uh, from that, the, the demos and implementing like new stuff. Um like the, we'd like to see at least three menu adjustments or service improvements if, if, whatever the case may be, um based on the student feedback. Um and then some of the achievements, um we, we wanna identify where some of these things that we're doing, um where, where they're effective. Uh one of the things that I'm gonna focus on, again, being new in the district, to be, you know, making myself visible and getting out there, um and engaging and meeting, meeting new people and students and everything is, is just getting out there in the cafeteria and, and talking to people and um making, make people realize that I am approachable and you come up to me, you know, you can tell me that lunch sucked yesterday, come on. I mean, I, you know, I've got a thick skin, I work in restaurants, I work in nursing homes, so I've heard, I've heard it all. Um and uh, you know, just engaging them so that, to open up uh those, those lines of communication. Um that's really my biggest, my biggest goal for our department this year, for myself as well, is engagement and building those, those relationships and uh those, those, uh those bonds with people, students and staff totally. Um indicators of success for this would be positive feedback and um, and then that, that student engagement.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome. I dropped my hat.
Do we need a halftime break?
Nope, I'm gonna go quick. Well, I think it's strategic on Chris's part too. He has me go first in the uh buildings. It's only been a month, I can't have a lot to talk about since the building council presented last month, so. Uh but a couple of quick updates about where we stand in the elementary school. Uh we've accomplished some things, um heading towards our building councils. I skipped over the slide, but you saw the crew from, uh it's been the crew, same crew for the last two years. So those are ELA math goals, um grade level benchmark assessments have been completed at this point, uh jump start, which uh is done by our RTI providers, and cycle one has started jump start. Uh we take the kids that were in interaction at the end. Uh, we take the kids that were in interaction at the end of last year and we give them a jumpstart at the beginning of the school year, so it's the same kids with the exception of kindergarten that's new to us. So, uh, those students went through that process while the teachers were doing the benchmarking, so that we have fresh data to be able to make decisions about this group. Um, goal setting meetings have taken place, I still have one left tomorrow, second grade is my last one. So we've been talking and going through, uh, the goal setting process for our two goals, our ELA math goal. So those meetings happen in the morning with me, uh, like I said, I've done third, fourth and fifth last week, I did K in first grade this morning, I have second grade tomorrow. We'll have all of our goal setting meetings done, we'll have all of our goals set for January and then we will revisit after the benchmarking in January, uh, to, uh, see if kids accomplish their goal and reset goals for the second half of the school year. Big positive, well, shout out a bit to, to Terry is, you know, we talked about K twelve, um, and trying to get some consistency and getting into each other's spaces. Carrie came to one of my goal setting meetings, it was great to have, uh, someone else there, which was good, uh, well, K twelve connection. And we have student review and ISD meetings that I'm sure will be explained more in, in MTSS, but we created some common language around student review. We talked a little bit about it last year, sort of, uh, well, it's a tier two, uh, level meeting, uh, it's layered below our ISD process before we start to talk about students, uh, at a more significant level and I guess potentially looking at if there needs to be some testing down through parents' office, through CSE. Student reviews begin next week after goal setting. So we have student reviews set, um, through January, they occur twice, well, once a month per grade level on that same rotation. So next week I'm at K one, two this week, third grade will have their first student review opportunity. So that's where they can bring a student of concern based on those benchmarks, things they're seeing in the classroom and we start that documentation process as a group. Uh, we've had an ISD meeting as well, which was an ISD carryover, so a student that was put into the ISD process at the end of last year, that has carried over into this year, we've already had one of those meetings on student, uh, issue. So we're plugging along towards our academic goals. Um, care goal, uh, this was where you got to see our first little video with our buddy RJ, the Cardinal. Uh, our second, well, we will have on October thirtieth, the day before, um, Halloween. We will have our first assembly in the auditorium, the entire K five building will come down. Kids will be recognized on student free stream, will be recognized for being the winner for cooperation. Our lovely music department, I got an email from Mr. Matt today saying that they've done their piece, so they're doing the video for accountability. So the students double promotion from all the upcoming play, so the kids from the play are doing accountability. So the kids get to see a little bit of the characters from the play, uh, they've done their piece and we'll be rolling out the new video. Uh, Mr. Cassibek will be working on it before the thirtieth. So the unveil of that video will be at the thirtieth at that assembly. So we'll recognize the kids, talk to them about what accountability is, we'll play our new video and then they'll be off till Christmas break and we'll have a focus on the building on accountability. And that ties in, uh, Lauren Deos, school counselor, is doing our SEL, she is wrapping a lot of our Cardinal care language and manners into those variety visits. So she'll have kids all day long tomorrow, uh, grade, the classroom at each grade level goes through and she's providing that instruction this year. We're plugging along towards that. Give me my quickest presentation ever. Family engagement goal, uh, Fall Harvest Festival is February twentieth, as I told you the first, uh, time we presented. Those are board meeting nights on purpose, five thirty to six thirty, so you can maybe stop down at five thirty, check out the fall festival. We did move the May one, uh, on the suggestion of this table to the budget night. So we moved it off the board meeting to budget night, so hopefully we get a lot of families out here at five thirty to six thirty on budget night. Quick things there, we sent a survey to parents about what they wanted, that's where we came up with our events. We sent a second survey out, in that first survey, I asked if you would be willing to be part of the parent advisory group. People said yes, got a second survey with these dates, people were able to pick and choose based on their schedules. Uh, we know that sometimes if you're a baseball family, maybe the spring isn't the season that you wanna try to volunteer, if you're whatever. So we have our parent advisory groups set, um, our first, first parent advisory meeting is on Monday for Fall Festival. Building council's been meeting and has some ideas, but this is where we're gonna loop parents, I think we have six parents signed up for parent advisory group in the elementary for the first event. They'll be joining us hopefully if they can at three thirty on Monday to give their input about the event, what they'd like to see, what they think is great. Just today, I was talking to Richard prior to the meeting, I met with Cornell Cooperative Extension, another exciting thing. We've got a grant, I'd love to say that I know exactly how it all came to be, but it's gonna be great. Uh, so farm to table and when I sat and talked to them, I said, well, farm to table and har- I said, I got a harvest festival, so they're all in on harvest festival, that's gonna be a cool thing, but he'll need to get to share, he wasn't with us today, he was in Marion. But the kids are in the cafeteria and are going to get to try local, uh, food, so like in November it's squash, so Richard's gonna be serving some squash, it's not gonna be required, it's going to be just a case that they get to take if they choose with their lunch.
Lots of no thank you bites.
Yes, so, uh, but they're also gonna come to be part of our event, there's going to be some lessons and we can share more about it, but, uh, we have some money that's gonna get to be used through the school, through Cornell, that's a really exciting opportunity. So that's there and last but not least, it's just to continue work as I talked about in the last presentation about culture within the building. It's not something, even when you get a good, what you think you have is a good culture, you can't rest on your laurels, you gotta keep plugging along. So we have a little team building activity I'm gonna be unveiling to my staff, uh, before the end of the month, a fun little thing, uh, I don't wanna ruin the surprise. But we've already had a staff breakfast, Christine Culver, if you didn't know, who was in our office for many, many, many years, retired over the summer. We dragged her back in September and got to celebrate her at a little breakfast, uh, so, just another little team building thing, bringing people back, so continuing to work on culture. And that's the elementary update. This is my quickest by far, well, what's the time?
Eight and a half.
What is it?
Eight and a half.
Uh, well, good job, thank you all for presenting tonight to our operations folks, to Jeff, thank you. Um, and just to continue to, to remind the board, I hope you're gonna continue to see this year, even into next month when we have new presentations, um, the individual and intentional role setting, but the alignment that you're seeing within the district with intention to some of these higher arching things, but how do they fit with each department, right? Cause it's different for how that works, culture works different for how it is in Tom's department or how it is in Rich's department, but the idea is that we're talking about these same things. We're providing professional development around these same things, we're providing students with some real, and families with some real continuation of language that they're gonna see in multiple different places from multiple different faces, right? So just to continue to highlight that, I hope the board continues to see that as we move through this year.
Um, okay, so next up we have our CSE and CPSC report. Did anyone have any questions or comments for the parents? Yeah. Um, so, Board of Education upon recommendation of Superintendents of Schools and pursuant to education law approves the CSE and CPSC recommenda- recommendations as presented. Is there a motion? Amy? Is there a second?
Oh my God. Scott.
Amy and Scott.
So awkward.
You get that.
All right, Allison paper.
Hi.
Oh, this is scary. Love this meeting, please, love it. All right. Names auditor report, we don't. Did anybody have any questions?
Nothing to report on.
Okay, so we're good?
Mm-hmm.
You're on.
Yeah, so just, uh, I wanna continue to, to share, just we've got a strong positive start for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, one of the highlights of the past week was we had our open house last week, which I know some folks were able to attend. We saw our excellent turnout, um, and we continue to see, you know, positive feedback from our families regarding the, the approach that we've taken the last couple of years, which is PK twelve open house. So all of the, the buildings are having an open house in a, a variety of times, but on the same night for our parents that have multiple students, um, in different buildings. So, um, you know, when you do it that way, I think if there's, there's always some challenges to every way that you do it, right? But, um, I do like the way that it really shows and feels unified and we have community partners here, um, and it allows everyone to really approach it one night holistically. Um, and so that, that's been a great, uh, I think, change over the last couple of years. And the next thing is, is that we now do it the Thursday, um, before the October Superintendents Conference Day, right? So that, the part of that is, is intentional so that our staff who's here late, they can turn around and come back to the conference day. And it's just a different setting when you come to the conference day, right? You come in, we have breakfast and we, we start with a little bit of a, of a, of a more relaxed start to the day. Um, this year we practice, uh, our conference day, we practice some of our, our drills for, um, staff that is looking at our sites off campus so that people can talk about evacuations, some things that we can't necessarily do when we have students with us. So that was a great start and I wanna thank, um, our leadership team and their, the, the preparation they do for that day is a ton of preparation and they're preparing for that day as we're opening school, right? Like that, there's a lot that goes into that, the first five, six weeks of the school year, they're working their tails off and they're also trying to prepare for this really important conference day. So I appreciate the work that Dr. Weller does, the principals and the whole leadership team, Karen put a ton of effort into preparing for the safety drills, so thank you to that whole group. Um, and I wanna express my gratitude for our staff, cause they turn around from an open house and they come back that next day and they dive in and they go to work and we look at data and we look at PK twelve vertical alignment, um, and they spend a lot of time and a lot of energy on the professional growth. Um, finally, I wanna reinforce the student message that you've heard earlier regarding homecoming, it's a great week, it's an exciting week. Um, and being a four-day week, we pack it all into four days. Um, this year though, I do wanna highlight and take a, a more of a PK twelve approach to homecoming, which was feedback from, from different stakeholders that we try to involve the whole district, um, and we're doing that in a more developmentally appropriate way where the elementary is celebrating and doing days, uh, their spirit of days a little bit different that are more, make more sense for them. Um, and then middle school's doing theirs and high school's doing theirs, there are also middle schools doing a pep rally, high school's doing a pep rally. So it's really trying to make it a holistic event. Uh, I'm really excited for Saturday, cause we have a day full of events, but also to highlight Terry's group, the middle school is doing a carnival type activity that is going from eleven to one, so when the parade ends, there's gonna be a time there where, uh, it's really gonna be focused on our elementary students, um, before or when they're at the game, giving them something to do, um, when they're at the game. So, and it's also, again, pushing some of the work that Terry and her building council presented on, which was trying to bring family and student engagement together. So really excited for those opportunities and looking forward to this weekend. So, that's it.
Where's the carnival at?
It's right behind the, uh, the stands on the football field.
Yeah, between the features and the red.
The, the grass practice field there, so it's gonna be a nice location hopefully where you can't miss it, but also parents can watch games and still watch kids.
Nice. Okay, so now onto our committee of things.
So Scott was in policy, I'll actually do the other two, four, because four members who do that are not here, so, um, branding committee we did meet. Um, we're, we're actually gonna shift that group, um, and Chelsea can talk about it, but unfortunately she wasn't able to be here tonight. That group is now going to be the culture committee and their focus is going, because now we're kind of past branding, right? Our goal now is to continue to push culture, what you saw is, is each building is talking about, each department is talking about, so we wanna have a district-wide group that's gonna focus on that. So we're gonna look at how do we create a culture that continues to move us forward, create belonging, create a sense of pride, um, but not lose sight of the historical and traditional things that are so valuable to our school and community. So, um, their work in the last meeting was focusing how do we get Cardinal cares into the community? So they had a lot of great ideas about how we can partner with some of our local, um, organizations and businesses to give them some, um, opportunities to be part of the Cardinal care just as well, so it's not just a school thing, but it really becomes a community base. Um, I'll turn policy to Scott in just a second, Capitol project, just a quick update. Um, Barb and Matt in, um, the winter will start joining, uh, myself, Jeff and Tim in our, one of our, um, bi-weekly district Capitol project meetings. So they'll be having more to share in future winter and into next spring. Scott, you wanna talk about policy?
Uh, policy, we continue last year's efforts into this year. We believe we're on track, potentially to be through all policies by the end of this year.
End of, end of December, end of fiscal, yeah.
End of December, yeah. Sorry, yeah, yeah. Um, so we're, we seem to hit a flow, it's working really well. Um, tonight, uh, there's eleven policies up for vote to approve, um, they've been amended. We, also, tonight, we went through, um, fourteen more, um, two of them will be retired as a result of adding language to other policies and twelve were approved to move forward next month with some new offices. Does any questions from the board on any of them? Just let me know, trying to keep notes to this email or whatever. All right? It's all right? A lot of work though.
Yeah.
A lot of work, I appreciate you doing this.
So now we're on the board highlights, but we might have a small number left here. So I don't know if anybody here has anything they wanna highlight as we go next.
I went to the leader, leadership meeting, put on my jerseys, that the purple paint of rain, Karen and Heather Blackman was there and, um, so, it was wonderful, very inspiring, wonderful speakers and leaders, a lot of politicians. Um, it was really great, they did great activities and, and the idea was to just empower and, um, they've done some follow-up. Uh, empower women in leadership and they've done some follow-up and, um, one of the things I think Karen and I were talking about afterwards or mentioned is it'd be nice to have some younger voices there and maybe even some of our young board leadership and people like that, so, yeah. It was really well taught, I, I enjoyed it, I'm sure Karen could say the same.
Yeah, it was wonderful.
Yeah.
And it's not the, it's the first of that, of that in our region, uh, last year there was an event, but it was broader. It was really nice to see that many women leaders and supporters break from our region, I mean, there's probably hundreds of people there, different, all break from, I don't think they're like supposed to be in the street.
Who's that, I think it's that one.
I know, you should come next.
Nice, thank you.
Go on. Anything, Barb?
Yeah.
She.
Well, Barb and I attended.
Yeah. I'll go this way.
Um, the portion of graduate.
How was it?
It was really good and we'll, we'll provide more information, we'll record in a work session.
Okay, yeah.
And then take time now, but it was, it was really interesting, um, and interactive, everyone loves an interactive session, so, um, but it was good. It brought back a lot of good information.
Um, interested to share about that.
Sure.
Cool. Maybe that's why she'll have more stuff for me. Um, yeah, Jane and I are in the, that, you know, what do you want to do next, I'm sure I can make sure.
Yeah, I just said, yeah, October one, this is, his dad worked right in that conversation, so we've got a lot of, a lot of opportunities we just talked about that, that October one session.
We'd really love to, um.
Hope they're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, very great, that's the one we're working on, Tom and Richard's work is to.
See, like one of our, and there's more, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, so moving on to our financial reports, we like that one.
Yep.
Okay. Did anybody have any question, run, financial report? Well, so then, there are no questions, all just on the gap in the board. Um, we have our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget development calendar, depending on how anything on that can be voted.
Oh, that's my mistake, it should be the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget development calendar here.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the attachment should say that, the resolution, yeah.
We can, we can, we can say twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I think you dashed it, should say that, but the resolution, yeah, the resolutions, yeah. Yeah.
Thanks for just throwing a poll, I have a degree of difficulty, I think some of our.
Well, we don't wanna be in that area yet, but we are getting there.
Maybe more, okay. Um, Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law approves the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget development calendar as presented. Amy, who's gonna be the second?
She's the second.
Yes, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's Carrie. Records management. Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law approves the attached resolution for records retention as presented. Anyone have anything on that before we?
I was just mistaken, I don't know if to clarify, we had to change the way it's used for one of, it's in one of the policies that we're approving next. The method for how long we have to keep records has changed, so we had to prove this resolution first to use that method, and then we'll approve the policy which says with record retention, we'll be done using that method.
I should have.
Um, I should have sent out an email saying it was in there, but I didn't think of it either, Scott, so.
Do we have? Motion, sorry, Scott's first, Amy's second, they switched it up that time. Okay. Now we're on to the policies from last month. Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Carrie, thanks God. Now we're on to the policies from last month. Um, Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law approves the waiving of the second reading and approves policy thirty-three eleven, and fifty-six sixty, fifty-six seventy-two, fifty-six seventy-six, fifty-six eighty-one, fifty-six eighty-three, fifty-seven twenty, fifty-seven thirty, fifty-seven thirty-one, fifty-seven forty, fifty-seven forty-one as presented. So, second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, Carrie. Did you just want second?
No, because she's retired, retiring, because members didn't take them in those new policies.
Oh, oh, yes. Um, Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law approves the waiving of the second reading and retire policy seventy-two forty-three as presented. Amy, motion.
Who's that?
Second, Scott's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. And then we have a written agreement between the superintendent and the project faculty association. Boy, um, Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law approves the written agreement between superintendent and employee of the district. Any questions on this one for? Okay. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. I'll pick a few, I'll read them back. Um, the Board of Education, oh wait, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss building personnel. Get a motion, Scott's second, all in favor?
Aye.